Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Here.
Council President Sikora Ludwig.
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Community Act have been complied with and satisfied. That the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the Municipal Council of the City of New Brunswick, has been filed through the city clerk, has been placed on an appropriate bulletin board, posted in the bad vestibule of City Hall, visible to the public through the windows in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely The Home News Tribune. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal.
Please remain standing in a moment of silence for all those suffering around the world and all those who protect us every day. Thank you.
Move the motion to adjourn to minutes, October 6th.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Sikora Ludwig.
Yes. Madam Perk is a correspondent and directors of the appropriate departments.
Yes, Madam President, the correspondence received by the city clerk's office was forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you. I have no business this evening, we have no public hearings, we have ordinances on second reading, one ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 8, Health and Safety, Chapter 8.40, Solid Waste Collection and Disposal, Section 8.40.040(c), Regulations, Recycling Containers, I'll open it up to the public. If anybody would like to speak on this ordinance only, please step forward one time for five minutes.
Ah, yes, if you can just tell me what this is regards to the recycling, blue containers to the public or something else?
No, it's to the public, you'll now be able to purchase additional containers, the twenty dollar, the twenty gallon ones for fifteen dollars and the thirty-two gallon ones for twenty dollars.
And so what the purpose is due to where, I know it's been about two years now saying that the reason for purchasing these containers is this is the only way that your recycling will get picked up and no more clear bags due to where I see the company is still taking recycling and clear bags. So please, like I said before, there's some type of scam where you're telling the public that due to where, what, before, I forget the lady's name, before she retired from New Brunswick, the City of New Brunswick, please tell me, what is the purpose of this due to where, what, they're still taking the recycling and clear bags?
The purpose of this is that when people want to purchase these containers, they can now even sell for the dollar, as listed here at fifteen and twenty respectively, like I just stated.
And like I said, the purpose of going to this due to where it's been almost two years now, due to where even though the cans used to be, be free, due to where even Mr. Anderson had said that the last time we talked about this, that they were listed for free and I know they weren't. But like I said, please tell me, why are you telling people that they have to purchase the recycling bins? Now can you tell me what is the situation that you can't use clear bags anymore?
Mr. Valencia, do you have anything to add about the clear bags and what the policy is on that?
I will defer to Ms. McGuire.
Ms. McGuire, you're on.
For the clear bags, we're working with the recycling company to not take those anymore, they shouldn't be taking them. This is allowing us to be able to increase the price of the containers because they increase the price through the county contract.
Thank you.
And like I said, due to where, this is basically a scam that I say because of when this started two years ago and like I said, due to where I was a volunteer for my neighborhood to pass out the flyers when you were saying the cans was only nine ninety-nine and the purpose for doing this was due to where the public, the residents had to stop putting their recycling and clear bags due to where you said that, okay, each area would be to be inspected, anybody to get caught with doing this was to pay a hundred and fifty dollar fine where like I said, honestly, I just believe this is a big scam due to where for the past two years, over two years now, where you keep saying that, okay, the purpose of purchasing containers is no more clear bags, like I said, please, when I said it the first time, it's just a scam due to where I don't see what we're being told on paper, I don't see being done the right way. And does any of you really make sure that things are being done the right way? No, and that's why I say it's just a scam.
Does anyone else wish to speak on this ordinance only? Seeing none.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Sikora Ludwig.
Yes. Ordinance is on first reading, one, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 10.20, Handicap Parking, Section 10.20.010, Schedule 39, Parking Zones for Handicap Persons, Add 402 Sanford Street Apartment 1 and 299 Townsend Street.
Move the ordinance setting down December 7th, 2022, at 5:30 same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Sikora Ludwig.
Yes. Two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles in Traffic, Schedule 1, Penalty, this is for penalties for parking violations.
Move the ordinance setting down December 7th, 2022, at 5:30 same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Sikora Ludwig.
Yes. Three, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 17 Zoning, Zoning Update Regarding Master Plan Recommendations.
Move the ordinance setting down December 31st, 2022, at 5:30 same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Sikora Ludwig.
Yes. Next we have Resolutions 1 through 34, I'll open it up to the public one time up for five minutes only. Please state your name when you address the matter.
Good evening, Council, Charlie Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I'll start with number nine at the top of page three. See the tree lighting on a Sunday in December. Does this mean that the official New Brunswick holiday tree is going to be at War Memorial Park instead of the usual location or this is in addition to that?
This is in addition to that.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, next page. Wanted to ask about the fifteen thousand dollars for Hatfield Schwartz, is this related to their investigation of the DPW?
I believe this is generally for their counsel on Mr. Shamlin, we could.
It's generally the council work, there's been a lot of contracting issues this year. Certainly some of that may be there, but that's not, that's not the entire.
Thank you.
Okay. Next I see a police matter, a lawsuit against a couple of officers and if I'm not mistaken, this is a matter involving a serious violent crime in our schools, in the New Brunswick High School. This was a really brutal attack on the victim and I wanted to ask the nature of the case and the status of the case and, you know, what we might expect to see in terms of the total cost to taxpayers.
I can say it's always been our policy, we do not comment on ongoing investigations in criminal cases or any cases, but Mr. Shamlin, do you have anything to add to that?
It's pending litigation, I, yes, we don't comment on about pending litigation and this particular matter is being handled primarily through our insurance fund. This is just to pay punitive damage representation to this firm for two individual officers.
Thank you.
Okay, and can I just get the nature of what the accusation is against them?
I believe it's in the nature of wrongful arrest and of course, there are duties of responsibility.
Okay, well, it's very concerning. Move on to number eighteen, I guess refund to Robert Wood Johnson for eighteen Hardenberg Street. Curious what, what led to this refund? Are all of their properties exempt from property taxes?
Mr. Mulryne, this is my answer.
Yeah, this was a, this was a combination of lots related to the properties on Hardenberg Street that was, used to be taxable properties, one was combined into one major lot, it became tax exempt. So that piece of the property that was built originally shouldn't have been, so we're refunding for that.
For this year, twenty-two, okay. I'll just remark on the next resolution about the parking authority doing the clean team services for downtown Eastern Avenue, French Street and Remsen Avenue. I think there's got to be a better way, I know that the DPW workers would be well positioned to provide these services. It's never made sense why the parking authority is doing the cleaning of these areas and, yeah, just, you know, think that should be looked at. I'll move on to the next page, I see two taxi licenses that the parking authority is acquiring. Can somebody tell me what is this about, why is the parking authority procuring two taxi licenses?
They're procuring it for a settlement, but we have to actually do the transfers so that they can do whatever they want. Is anybody here from the parking authority that has any detail to that?
Yes, we're pretty sure that then ourselves keep the owner of the taxi, we have an initial agreement for him to satisfy a lease that he has in the house of the building.
Okay, and what's the parking authority going to do with these licenses?
We intend to auction them.
Okay. Thank you. Twenty-eight, the changes to the zoning ordinance, various recommendations, can you give some insight into what exactly those recommendations are or what's going to change?
There are, there are a lot of them, I could read through the summary if you'd like, but the detail on any of them would be provided at the planning board's where I got here. Would you like me to read through what I got here? It says it.
Okay, well, maybe when I finish with the last page, you could do that.
No, if you'd like me to do it, I'll do it now.
Will you pause the clock?
No.
Okay, well then maybe I can just see you after the meeting and you can hand me the list or we could chat about it. But I did want to comment on Victor Ortiz being appointed fire official on the last page here. It's apparent that Mr. Quagliata retired in November of 2021. Who has been serving in that role and why hasn't, why hasn't the council formally filled the role for over a year now?
Mr. Goldberg, do you have the particulars tonight?
Mr. Ortiz has been the acting fire official for this time.
Okay, and why, why, why acting for a year, why, why wasn't this formalized sooner?
I'm not sure, do we have an answer to that?
I can find out if I have an answer.
Oh, sorry.
I do not have an answer for why, you know, took this on the test.
Okay, it's an important position, no doubt, is there a K raise associated with it?
I'm not sure if it's a K raise or if it's the same salary, I saw.
He didn't, once he was appointed, the fire official, he didn't receive a K raise, yes.
Okay, and who does he report to?
The fire.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then, yeah, the last two, last minute additions, renovations to the council chambers, which are long overdue. I wanted to ask for an update on that and what we might expect to see in this room. And then also raise a question about this company, Aquashore, and why they're being given this contract for the twelve month period.
I can, the renovations that are going on in this room will be minimal, we're not going to change any of the character of the room, it's just to make, make space for the additional council members that are coming in. And as far as the insurance company, this one out to bid for our risk management piece and they're the ones who are going to put forth to us and your time is expiring.
Did they have the lowest bid?
I'm not sure if they were the lowest, were they the lowest bid?
They were all the same, oh, wait, this works, it's a commission that's paid, they pay whatever the JIF commission is, any of the JIFs, what they would accept.
So it's through the JIF?
Correct.
I'll have the next speaker, please.
Thank you.
Hi, yes, Daniel Morris Somerset Street. First I'd like to start off with twenty-one, due to where I see the auction going off for one thirty-three Jones Avenue, is this the same house that was caught on fire?
This is an abandoned property and we have to do, put this place in step so that we can move forward.
Is this the own, is this the same house that was with the garbage and caught on fire, is that?
Yes, it is.
So Mr. Cahill's buddy, due to where, and like I said, wow, wow, so is this money going to go towards, towards the city for all the cleaning up that you paid, paid over ten thousand dollars to have cleaned up over there? So any part going to go to the city, does it belong to the city or not?
I'm sure they'll handle properly once, once the property is auctioned off and that's all I can see.
And yeah, one reason why I'm surely smiling, like I said, yes, it is Mr. Cahill's buddy, due to where, what? He owns a house right on the, right on the corner from me on Oxford Street due to where he started bringing all the garbage over there and that's the house right behind B&amp;P Gas Station over there on French Street. And like I said, I, where some of you, Mr. Egan, and all the way you looked at me when I said, okay, Mr. Cahill's buddy, yes, he is, due to where I see Cahill talking to him sometimes. And like I said, it is something suspicious due to where.
Whether or not Mr. Cahill knows him or not, it still has to go through the same process.
Well, like I said, a lot of things that you keep letting other people getting on, be getting over on, like I said, you let your buddies and friends do more of.
Do you have any other resolutions?
Like I said, you never like to hear the truth, guilt. Nineteen, due to where, wow, with cleaning up downtown, the money I just say you're donating to what, parking authority to help them with their debt due to where, what, out of the past two years, all the money that you've been paying them to keep George Street, Eastern Avenue, French Street and Remsen Avenue clean and it's not being done. And like I said, as a resident, due to where dealing with French Street and all over there with the rats over there, come on. Honestly, I say you'd be better off giving this money to the workers and due to where I see you have hired a worker that's been doing the cleaning over there and it surely hasn't been the parking authority over there. So wow, maybe you ought to pay him a little extra for doing it, but wow, are you really just donating money, just to be donating money? Because do any of you really check and make sure that it's done and no, it's not, hasn't been done? How many pictures I provided, how nasty it's been, come on. And honestly, I'm not going to mention his name, I said, wow, great job to the gentleman who, where he retired at first and then he's back now. I said, oh my, ever since you've been back, yeah, I've been seeing George Street looking much better now. So like I said, you're just wasting money and like I said, come on, give it to the real work, real workers instead of donating. Then wow, would you please be able to tell me what sixteen, sixteen is regards to?
Title 39, it may must give the police department the authority to go onto private property to do motor vehicle transactions if someone's parked on private property. It would give them the authority to go on to have a car towed, to ticket it and whatnot. And this was a project that was approved through the zoning board, parking was an issue in their parking lot and you'll be seeing more of these agreements as we catch up with some of the private parking lots in the area.
Okay, well explained, thank you, but even though like I said, with a, with a lot of laws now, honestly, at this point and seeing some, certain things due to where it doesn't match, I think, wow, I don't know if I have to go to Trenton or not, but I would like to see what the real law book is and I will get to that in my public comment. What are the reals law that matched Trenton due to where instead of, ooh, saying this is a law and it's not, but I will, I'll get to that further. Thank you for your details on that, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak on the resolutions only? Seeing none.
Move the resolutions.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Sikora Ludwig.
Yes. I just want to, I'm trying to gather information about turkeys for Thanksgiving that are being donated throughout the city. I do know the Sedan Street Reform Church is doing it on Monday, you have to pre-register to get a free turkey there. Bert is looking into other things in case there are in the city and he's going to put it up on the website for the knowledge of everybody. And please keep in mind, you know, those families less fortunate, if you're able to help out at Soup kitchens or donate any extra turkey or food to some of the places throughout town, it would be much appreciated by everyone. I want to congratulate the men's soccer team for being the first Rutgers team to win a Big Ten championship, that's a pretty big deal. I would like to thank everybody who did, hosted different veterans event throughout the city over the past week, there were quite a few of them and it was really nice to see the community come together on all of these and Joseph Johnson especially for our city with the continuation of the Hope City Heroes Program. It was a very nice day there. Then I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and also one more thing, the fire department, the New Brunswick Fire Department hosted a Make-A-Wish last week for a little boy and it was an incredibly heartwarming ceremony. The whole community came together, Elijah's Promise did the food that day, it was donated all through Soup Kitchen 411. They, they inducted the little boy into the department, they gave him a uniform, they had him on the truck, he went to his first alarm and they had a surprise birthday party for him, he's a ten-year-old little boy. And it was just such a wonderful thing that the fire department did and I want to thank them and it's just something I think the community should know about. Those are my only comments, Council Vice President Escobar, do you have anything to say?
Council President, if I can, I just want the record to reflect on the items for discussion about the best practices worksheet.
I'm so sorry.
The council is, no problem, you might want to just comment to the, and note that for the minutes.
So we will be working on the best practices worksheet for the year 2022.
Everyone's received their.
Everyone has received it?
Yes.
Okay.
We don't take any action this evening?
Yeah.
Okay, everyone's received and we have that on the record now and I apologize for jumping across. Now, Council Vice President Escobar, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, actually, just, just to be on the lookout, because I know that the fire department will be assuming turkeys, they do it every year and I am aware that they do live in the community. Also, the police department does the one, the Savation Army also has been distributing, they needed to be signed up before, so there's a couple of agencies are already doing that. Other than that, have a great and blessed Thanksgiving.
Councilwoman Anderson.
Again, congratulations to the New Brunswick and their Veterans Day program they had, also to Robert Wood Johnson, Barnabas Health for their Veterans Day ceremony on Monday, very nice. Also, not only congratulations to the Rutgers men's soccer team for winning, but to our New Brunswick JV Soccer Champs, they were champions also. Thank you to all the voters who came out, no matter how you voted, we need to get our voters going out there and stuff like that, so that's really good. And congratulations to councilpeople Escobar, Egan, Gaskins and Castaneda. And obviously we'll join them in January and thank you again all for coming out and voting as much as you can. Thank you.
Councilwoman Anderson.
Have a happy Thanksgiving with your family.
Councilwoman Anderson.
Same thing, happy Thanksgiving and congratulations to our teammates and this country because this past election was, we didn't know which way things were going to go with the voting and stuff like that. But this country came through, I think, the right way, basically. And for Veterans Day, just reminder that there are people, and now you're not veterans, but people who serve all around the world, we still live in a dangerous world right now. My son is in Japan right now, getting ready to go underway, you're not sure where yet, but, you know, just keep them in prayer.
Next we'll move on to public comment, if anybody would like to address the council for public comment, you have five minutes. One time only, comment only, not question and answer, please step forward and say your name.
Good evening, once again, Charlie Cradaville. I'll start with a quick thank you to the city clerk and her office and everybody else who was involved in administering the election. Thank you to all the voters and congratulations, Madam Vice President, Mr. Egan and your running mates on the victory. I've got to point out that the New Brunswick Housing Authority Board has not held a meeting since July. They're supposed to have one tonight, it's been postponed until November thirtieth. I know that the best practices worksheet that was on your agenda deals with them and deals with whether they are functional or dysfunctional, whether they have weak membership or strong membership. And I'm really at a loss to figure out why they can't get together to have a Zoom meeting. Keep in mind, they don't get together like you in person, they have their meetings on Zoom. They need four members of the seven to have a quorum and they haven't been able to do it since July? Is that acceptable to you? I don't think it should be. I know I've raised the issue that the executive director is moonlighting, he's got four other jobs, last I checked. Franklin, Boonton, Princeton, Atlantic City, he has jobs with five different housing authorities and unless he has a time machine, he's got the same twenty-four hours in a day that you and I have and I'm having trouble fathoming how he can possibly manage that workload. I saw some commentary online from Mr. Anderson where he mentioned that Mr. Clark's contract calls for him to work thirty-five hours a week in New Brunswick. Through you, Madam Chair, can Mr. Anderson tell us, has he seen the contract firsthand?
He was mentioned at the city council meeting maybe two or three times.
Okay.
I don't, I don't recall it ever being mentioned, but you know, this is just a comment section only, if Mr. Anderson has that information, he can provide it to you after the meeting.
Okay, I'll follow up with you too after the meeting, I also offer you this, if I may, through clerk's office here. This is a response to an Open Public Records Act to the housing authority. Specifically, my request was seeking a copy of Mr. John Clark's current contract with the NBHA and you'll see there are no responsive records, which tells me there is no current contract with Mr. Clark, which tells me the practices at the housing authority are really, really bad. If the executive director does not have a current contract, that not only makes me doubt the statement I read online from Mr. Anderson that it has some sort of set number of hours that he's supposed to clock in for, but it also makes me think, what the heck is going on there if the top guy doesn't have a contract setting forth the terms of employment? So this is, you know, authentic, I'll vouch for it, I'll work with you to investigate. But I think, you know, what was done tonight in terms of the best practices worksheet was a total passing of the buck, right? This is your opportunity every year, which DCA requires, for you to actually look into the two autonomous authorities, the parking authority, which I see did send a representative tonight in case there were any questions, and the housing authority, for the record, did the housing authority send a representative tonight?
I don't believe anyone did.
Okay, so this is your one chance a year to scrutinize this authority and see whether they are functional or dysfunctional and I would say the evidence I have is pointing to severely dysfunctional. And I'm going to continue to investigate Mr. Clark and his five jobs and I think you should join me in that investigation because what I'm seeing here doesn't add up with what I've been told and I hope you're as concerned as I am and I hope to see all of you November thirtieth on that Zoom meeting, if it actually does happen. Because this is just not acceptable for the agency to just leave the public in the dark for many months. You know, they have a senior housing project that they're supposed to move forward with, it's been over a decade since they tore down the Hoffman Pavilion. I know they have plans to do something there, but they've had plans to do something there for over ten years. John Clark shouldn't be out getting more jobs, he should be finishing the job he started here in New Brunswick and it's, to me, unacceptable for them to go this long without a meeting and for him to not have a contract and for frankly, the board and the council to not be informed that he's taking all these other jobs because I think you were taken by surprise when I brought this up, that he has all these other jobs. I don't think you were consulted and you should have been. I think the board should have been consulted and I don't think they were. And, you know, frankly, I, I, I can only imagine what HUD must think about this situation where they've got the same guy involved in five different housing authorities, I don't think that was how it was intended to be. I am going to follow up on some remarks at the prior meeting. You say that you're always going to respond with answers to the questions, but I asked them and didn't get the answers. New Brunswick Water Utility got fined over three hundred thousand dollars for lying about the quality of the drinking water. That was almost ten years ago, has the city paid the fine?
I don't have that information.
Do you recall when I asked it at the microphone two meetings ago?
I do, I don't, I don't, last, I don't believe we have paid the fine, is that true of your knowledge or you're not aware?
I haven't got the check papers.
I have, no, I'll check on that.
Okay, well, that's what you said last time, so I'm just at a loss here, I mean, I'll, I'll let the next person speak, but we need to do a better job of following up and following through on the questions that are asked at this microphone. It is on, it's on video and audio for all to see.
Like I say, I would get up here and say, wow, honestly, some of you, if you can't treat people equal, you don't belong on this earth. How you said that due to where, trying to make it as a racism thing that I was coming before, but I noticed none of you made any comments at the last meeting, I said, regards to ICE being here with no New Brunswick. Can I tell you another case, this came up on my phone yesterday, please, and like I said, what? I don't have time to read it, but wow, due to where, what, somebody was, for three murders in two days, two days. New Brunswick had them on assault, aggravated assault, child abuse. ICE settled acts that Perez be held in jail while it started deportation proceedings against him since he originally from Mexico and was in this country illegally. What did New Brunswick Police Department do, let him go? You tried to call me a racist when I was speaking on certain things leading with the IDs that you were giving to. But my point is, where I'm speaking on this, because like I said, I love everybody, what, I got Mexico shirts, I got plenty of friends. Look, no matter what race or creed or color, we need each other. But please, my point is why I'm speaking on this, due to where what I'm seeing regards to French Street, what, is it with the police department? What, your guess is whether somebody's illegal or legal, if you arrest them, due to where, like I said, men touching on women, do they get taken in? What, out of forced stabbing, did I see a police report, an article on it, on, over on French Street? Did I see an article regards to Walgreens getting robbed? Why, but wow, you hear something with Remsen Avenue and Seaman Street, oh, get the police over there, get the police over there. So like I said, please tell me out of respect, what, just like you told me, I couldn't put my hands on nobody? What, is the police department going by race or color or who they're ticketing with, with anything? Because what, like I said, what, guessing whether the person's legal or illegal? And like I said, you can look up on the news articles, this is in Facebook, this is through New Brunswick, this is through the state that's releasing. this is through the state that's releasing this of what New Brunswick is doing. But like I said, I would just take it from there. Come on, treat everybody equal. What, if it's the law, thank you, Jesus, with the prosecutor, he did release my ticket. What, the judge didn't want to do it, and please record me, Mr. Shamie, racism. What, hit and run, hey, hit and run with the lady? Wow, $200 fine, man with making noise, $2,500 fine? Like I said, pure racism through New Brunswick. Like I said, and you can record him to other judge, I don't care, but I will go back to my good news. I will say thank you to Sergeant Bobadilla, due to where, for helping me twice yesterday. And one was finding, helped me find a missing person with a girl, she was looking for her mom, due to where she passed out in a location. We called to the hospitals, they, they didn't have her. But actually, like I said, with his help yesterday, and like I said, luckily, due to where he told us to do it the right way, we were able to find the mom, due to where she was listed as, she wasn't listed in, because she didn't have any ID on it, but we were able to find her located in the hospital. I just say my heart goes to him, thank you very much, because without his help, we wouldn't have been able to find the, the young lady's mom, who is a friend of mine. Like I said, I know we have good officers that's, what, between Sergeant Bobadilla, Sergeant Dalton, Officer Yasek's, like I said, the main three that I do see good. And if you ask them, would I say, "Wow, please, spread your happiness, your joy, your right works along to others", even though I, like I said, it's not about the officers, it's about these council members, the mayor, and the people that are in charge of the, this Police Department. But come on, New Brunswick can be better, and honestly, it will be better. I give you my word, New Brunswick, you're going to see a change, because like I said, the Lord is not happy with what he's seeing if you can't treat people equal.
Thank you, Mr. Mulroney. I'll have the next speaker.
I'm Brittany Richardson, Livingston Avenue, and unfortunately, a driver for the Department of Public Waste. Everybody's being thanked and happy Thanksgiving and everything, but nobody said thank you and happy Thanksgiving to the Department of Public Waste. So I'm here to say that to the guys that I work with. I appreciate them standing up with me for what's right, and I appreciate them staying out there when the city that we work for doesn't consider us essential workers. I want to say thank you to them for working hard through all inclement of weather. I want to thank them for staying with this company, even though we were undercutted by the union in many different ways, they, these guys still stick it out, servicing your garbage, your recycling. When your recycling company that you pay more than us falls through, we're the people that come and clean up behind everyone, even though we're going to give raises and more job opportunities to the Parking Authority for things that we clean up every day. And yet, still, these guys that haven't gotten any raises, the workload, it goes up and up and up every day. You know, the illegal dumping is ridiculous, it's getting worse and worse. You know, but I guess you guys want to say inspectors or whatever else you have to say. But I just want to say thank you to the guys that I really work with. It's unfortunate that Cahill is our mayor once again, but you know, all the money that goes with that. But thank you, Charlie, for supporting us, and, you know, regardless to the crookedness and things that they have going on in the city, it's nice to see that somebody still fights for the right things, and I really appreciate everything you've done. And I want to say thank you, and thank you to the Police Department, because they really look out for us when we're out there working. I wish they would do it a little more, because, you know, sometimes it's, this job is really dangerous. You know, especially when people are in a rush to go to work, they're flying by, you know, people are pulling over to get their coffee. Some of the officers are doing it. They don't even pull these guys over that are illegally parking, but that's a whole nother, you know, situation. But why not give everybody else a raise instead of the Department of Public Waste? You know, once again, thank you to my guys. You know, they're, the thank you to my supervisors, the one that actually put in the work, that know about garbage, that are not just on a piece of paper, running something from behind the scenes, they're out here with us, putting in that work, and they're not complaining about it, the workload is crazy. You guys can hire 100 men over us, and they would never be able to do the work that we do. You've had other guys from other departments cry on the back of that garbage truck, and they cannot do what we do. You tried to have your children from the summer program do what we do, and you still couldn't get done what we do with the amounts of garbage that you have in the city. You can pay the transfer station to lower your paperwork with your tonnage, that will still never hide how much garbage the city of New Brunswick has, and my guys do it every day with ease. They deserve a higher pay, and they deserve better respect. Whether you see it or you, or you don't, it's going to be, the blood is going to be on your hands, because these guys are going to find other jobs and move on, and then you will never be able to hire anybody. You would have to hire a contracted company and pay them 10 times more what you're paying us, the same amount that you're paying your own recycling company. You pay them way more than you pay the people that live and service to the city, that service the city of New Brunswick. And once again, because you didn't say it, I will say thank you to them. They work hard, and they don't complain, and we're being paid pennies, pennies. And they're still out there doing a great job with a smile, and we have no problem with it. Taking extra garbage from anybody just to smile and try to give that hope that we still have good people that live in the city of New Brunswick. Even though I don't celebrate Thanksgiving, I hope these guys get to celebrate, because one day off for us means a double day of garbage, the next day we come back to work. So we never get a break. So thank you to the Department of Public Works for the people that matter.
Thank you very much. Seeing none?
I got some.
Oh, yes, sir.
So just for context for the turkeys. So every year, the city of New Brunswick provides upwards of 1,100 to 1,500 turkeys. Throughout the pandemic, it's been considerably hard to even find turkeys at the right price. Through my department and the Feeding New Brunswick Network, we pay a couple grand a year for turkey. So while the city is not giving out turkeys, we have no less than 20 food pantries throughout the city that will be giving out turkeys, or already have started giving out turkeys. So there will be an updated post tomorrow through the Feeding New Brunswick Network that will be also shared with the city of New Brunswick on the Facebook and some other avenues. And we will make sure that residents know where they can pick up a turkey between tomorrow and Thanksgiving. But a lot of that work has already started at the Choice Food Pantry on 81 Remson Avenue, and then a couple of pantries that Councilwoman Escobar mentioned. But, you know, we've been getting the calls nonstop. We know how hard it is, and we know the cost of inflation, and that process of just retrieving a turkey has been almost impossible. So I personally wish everybody happy Thanksgiving, and look out for that update tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the information. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Sure, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar? Council President Zakora Ludwig?
Yes.